The executive session of the Wayne Board of Education Public Workshop Meeting, February 10, 2022, was convened in the conference room of the Wayne Board of Education, 15 Nellis Drive, Wayne, New Jersey. The Statement of Compliance set in forth time, date, and location was readily in accordance with requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, and the roll call was taken. The meeting was recessed and is now being re-convened. We have a mover to convene.
I move.
Yes.
Mr. Patel, here.
Mrs. Kazan?
Here.
Mrs. Kuhvar?
Here.
Mr. Pavlak?
Here.
And Mr. Pressico?
Pressico.
And Mrs. What?
Here.
Everybody, please stand for the flag suit in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So for my administrative summary report, let's get started. So during this public work session, we'll discuss some very important topics and share quite a bit of information for the board and for the community. We have two presentations. The first one is the District Start Strong Testing Results, which our Assistant Superintendent, this is Reichman, will share earlier this year. We were required to present student performance information, which gave the Board of Ed cause for concern about the impact of COVID on student learning. While the Department of Ed required that we make a report at that time, it did not produce any information that would allow the board or the administration to see where we stand compared to the rest of the state. That has changed this evening. I think you will see that while we're not where we'd like to be, we fared much better when compared to most other New Jersey public school systems. The second presentation is about successful bond referendum campaign practices. Ms. Lori Pearlough from the Northern Region Ed Services Commission and the New Jersey's Public Relations Association President will be assisting the board and administration with understanding more about getting the public involved in a possible bond referendum campaign. This presentation is the next step after the Board of Education retreat, which was held in December. A public work session in March will include more information from our architect about various projects with more refined and projected costs. At the April public work session, the Board of Education will be hearing from the district financial advisors about the cost of projects and the impact of those costs on local school taxes. So we'll need quite a bit of time for the presentations, but I'd like to call attention to some other agenda items. First of all, the big news to report this evening is already well-known across the district. It makes sense to recognize that we have reached another milestone in the pandemic recovery. Governor Murphy announced a new direction for masking in schools, and while Governor Murphy did not lift the masking requirement completely, he allowed local school boards the option to keep, modify, or make masking optional starting on March 7. In response to this news, the Wayne schools will be adjusting our COVID policies to make masking optional for students, staff, and visitors effective March 7. We'll continue to provide updates should there be any additional guidance. Tonight, the board will be voting on revisions to Policy 1648.11 appendices, making our school masks optional starting on March 7. This is item U1 under emergent policy. Work-based learning is an important program for Wayne high school students and has expanded dramatically even during the pandemic. We have about 120 businesses in Wayne and other local towns that have agreed to participate in the program and have been approved this school year. In short, the work-based learning program takes a variety of forms and is designed for each child to explore potential careers in real-life situations that are sometimes paid or unpaid internships. Tonight, we have four additional businesses: Rightview Living, Burger King, SP Industries, and the Spotted Dog Daycare, which are all in Wayne, that have agreed to participate in our work-based learning program. Thank you to these and all of the Wayne area businesses that willingly take our students under their wing and help them learn more about various career opportunities. This is item S6 under emergent education. Some exciting news, the New York Jets offered an $8,000 grant to the Wayne Township Public Schools to start a Wayne Valley Girls' Flag Football Program. The grant also includes Nike uniforms, flags, and footballs, all the equipment that's necessary. The NFL has been reaching out to communities across New Jersey, and there are several surrounding communities that will also have girls' flag football teams. 63 Wayne Valley Girls attended the general interest meeting, and with board approval, the team will start this spring. We're hoping to be able to have teams at both high schools, but the Jets committed to offering funding for Wayne Hills Flag Football for next year. The resolution pertaining to flag football is O7 under PWS Finance. Other news we have, we continue to see our COVID numbers move in a positive direction after many weeks of bad news. At this point, actually today, is the first day that we've had since, for a long time, where we have no new cases. So there is zero new cases. And so that's kind of another milestone. We only have a few staff members out due to COVID, and these numbers represent a dramatic reduction from our first New Year report, when we had over 800 students and staff who had tested either positive for COVID or were under quarantine. Along with the COVID update, I wanted to share with the Board of Ed that on Tuesday, the administration met with the Wayne Health Department to seek their guidance and feedback as we plan for all of our spring events, activities, trips, and end-of-year celebrations. So as we continue to recover from COVID and plan for normal, I wanted to take a moment to thank the Health Department for their help as we now have guidance about how to proceed with all of our events. We're delighted to welcome Acting New Jersey Secretary of State Tahisha Way to visit our students at John F. Kennedy Elementary School on the 22nd or 23rd of February. This is Way will be visiting one of our kindergarten classes, and she'll be working with our students and staff and highlighting reading for Black History Month. The New Jersey Quality Single Accountability Continuum, known as QZAC, is the Department of Ed's monitoring and district self-evaluation system for public schools. It's an accountability system that consolidates and incorporates the monitoring requirements of applicable state laws and programs and complements federally required improvements. The system focuses on monitoring and evaluating school districts in five key components that, based on research, have been identified to be key factors in effective school districts. These components are instruction and program, fiscal, governance, operations, and personnel. So at this point, we've gone through the early stages of QZAC monitoring. We've submitted all of our documents. Next month, in March, there'll be site visits, and at this point, the Department of Ed is verifying the accuracy of the documentation that we submitted, and so we're ready for that. The New Jersey Department of Ed's statewide budget collection process officially started. The Department of Ed released guidance for the 2223 budget year, and their software is open. The district will not have school state aid figures until after the governor releases that information with a state budget message, which is expected to be delivered in early March. The business office has been very busy reviewing school and department budgets, updating financial information in our financial system, and entering data into the DOE software. We continue to build the district-wide budget and present it to the public in March. Just to note that this week is National Counseling Week, so it's a week to focus public attention on the unique contributions of school counselors within U.S. school systems. National School Counseling Week highlights the tremendous impact that school counselors can have in helping students achieve school success and plan for a career. The 2022 theme is School Counseling Better Together. So just a moment to thank all of our school counselors for the tremendous work they've been doing for our students and also supporters have during these difficult times. Thank you to all of our school counselors. Give them a round of applause.
Can I interrupt? I'd like to make a point of order. Unfortunately, the mask mandate is still in effect, and we have several participants here this evening that are noncompliant, which could pose problems for us if the attorney would like to weigh in at the chairs.
Well, the intent of order still is in place. That's up to date for school property, so everybody should comply with the mask mandate.
Good evening, everyone. Not March 7 yet, but you'll have to wear a mask still. Please comply.
So just to conclude my report, I have to do the HID part of it. So I'm reporting the following data related to harassment, intimidation, and bullying incidents in the Wayne Township Public Schools. There were 17 incidents of HIDs reported and investigated since my last report. Six of those cases were deemed to meet the criteria of HID incidents. So in order to allow Ms. Pearlough a little additional time and to get things moving here, what I'd like to do is change the order of presentations a little bit. So Ms. Pearlough, if you would begin your presentation. I already provided the board with an introduction, so if you know a little bit of the story and you ran off train and made a terrible mistake for our exact session. So Ms. Pearlough.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. My name is Lori Pearlough, and I'm Communications Consultant with the Northern Region Educational Services Commission, and I'm also the president of the New Jersey School Public Relations Association. So the purpose in being here tonight is to sort of scratch the surface around some key strategies with regards to communications on bond referendum. So I want to keep things simple. The first strategy, of course, is to plan ahead, which is exactly why we're here tonight, to start thinking about what's involved around communications with bond referendum. Obviously, one of the key components when we're talking about bond referendum is building trust with all of our stakeholders, and then, of course, connecting and communicating on all of the aspects related to bond referendum. So of course, the first step in planning ahead is to first consider what your timeframe would be. The state actually dictates when these votes can take place. There are some theories around which months may be more effective than others. We're not going to necessarily get into that. There are some statistics if you wanted to dig deeper into that, but certainly something to consider as you are planning for the future. Once you've selected your timeframe, it's very helpful to develop your campaign timeline and work backwards from there. The more time you allow yourselves, the more effective your campaign will hopefully be. Most importantly, what you want to do is conduct your research, engage your voters, and determine what your school community wants to see, as well as what their concerns may be, so that you can address all of those factors as you plan. Obviously, utilizing your research and your other findings to develop key messages and identify who your trusted community ambassadors are to help. Anytime we engage in a bond referendum campaign, the more folks you have involved and engaged, the more effective it's going to be, and hopefully resulting in a successful outcome. Obviously, trust is key here. When we're talking about things like architectural plans, which are often a key component in bond referendum campaigns, we want to make sure that they're very clear and accessible to all of your stakeholders. And of course, providing options for your community to weigh in and see what's involved, making sure that you have something like a dedicated website where you can, where folks can actually access the plans and see all of the details that are involved. And then, of course, communicating how these proposed plans will meet the needs and benefit the community at large. One of the most important pieces, obviously, is simplifying and explaining the financial impact and benefits associated with any bond referendum. Another piece that's key in building trust is monitoring conversations online. We know that so many folks go online to receive information, to share information, to weigh opinions. We want to be able to monitor that, engage any potential for opposition, and address that, right? We want to make sure that we're putting out the facts, and we want to address any opposition in the most constructive ways possible. And of course, displaying a unified front is always very important. Most importantly, taking on the huge task of connecting and communicating with a community, particularly one of this size, I would highly recommend utilizing a professional firm to assist. There's a lot of strategy involved, a lot of message development, branding collateral, interacting with the media. There are so many facets to a campaign that I would highly, highly recommend that people would consider utilizing professional firms. And then, of course, making sure that you are getting out and connecting with your communities through large events, smaller events, in-person events, and virtual events, because even with, you know, heading back into normalcy, there are certainly folks who would prefer to have a virtual event, or at least the option to participate in something virtually. Sometimes we just have demands on work and family, and sometimes that just might be more convenient. And of course, inviting yourself in, connect with as many community groups as you can to get your messaging out and to gauge feedback and receive feedback from your community. When you have established trust, it is certainly a lot easier to ask your community to take action. Of course, you can never tell taxpayers how to vote, but you can always remind them to vote. Now, of course, campaigning during COVID brings some uniquenesses. Community engagement, of course, is key. Involving your community in this process from the very early stages, gathering information and feedback, to the well-planned virtual events, we know that this has been successful in a lot of communities that had votes during COVID. I'm going to share some quick results with you in a moment. But of course, most importantly, when we're looking at communications overall, making sure that there is a very cohesive strategy, utilizing all of the most visual and interactive channels that you can, including social media, video, and photography, anything that you can utilize to demonstrate impact and show your community what's possible should your vote pass. This is just a quick summary of the results from votes that happened during 2021. If you were interested, you could certainly dig deeper into the stats that are available through the New Jersey School Boards Association. You can see which communities and districts had their, you know, had their votes to dig deeper into what their successes were. Obviously, challenging times, but certainly possible to have success with bond campaign. Happy to answer any questions that you may have around communications.
Is there, in terms of amount, is there a sweet spot of amounts that you've seen that were successful over those four periods that you hosted?
What do you mean by amounts?
So $20 million bond offering versus 241 that whole book can put out there?
I mean, every community is different, right? So I don't know that I can speak to the specific amounts. What I can tell you is that in some communities where they had multiple questions, there were instances where, you know, one question may have passed and another did not. So I think while I didn't get into the details of that, that might be something to be mindful of. But I don't know that I can speak to the amount because every community is so different, and the specifics, you know, in their campaigns are so different.
I actually had a question. You gave us the dates, but what's the timeline to prepare and have the paperwork into the body that puts together the actual election prior to the vote itself, the election itself?
So I don't know that I have the specific timeframe. That would probably be a better question to ask your bond counsel, but I know that there's a certain period of time. My recommendation, if you're starting out in advance, to give yourself as much detail as possible just to do your prep and engage your community through research before you put your actual plan together that goes to the state. So I don't want to misspeak about the timeframe.
No, I meant specifically, like, if we're going to do the April, when do we have to have that paperwork into, say, the county that runs the election?
I'm not sure.
Well, we'll look at the list.
That'd be a better question for you. Yes.
Is there a good timeframe to be out in front of this? Because a year out better is six months better. Like, is there a sweet spot to timeframes?
I would say, and this may sound too generous, but I think the more time you have, the better. If you have a year, I would say at a minimum, of planning time, and a year for, you know, to solidify exactly what your plan's going to be, could have up to a year to campaign and get your message out. It may sound too generous, but what I see oftentimes is when there is too little time, when we're talking about a few months, you don't have enough time to pivot, right? So having your community involved in what that bond package looks like is going to help you get to the, you know, to get to success and have an end-cast your bond referendum.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Just right here. Yes.
Earlier this year, I provided a preliminary presentation to just share the initial results that we were given back, and we were told that we would be given a more comprehensive report, which we did receive. This is a required presentation. The template and information that's in here is what was included in the NJ DOE template, and then I added in some additional information that I thought would be helpful for all of you to hear, just to gain a greater understanding. So important to understand and to know, this spring, we're going to be administering the New Jersey Student Learning Assessments. Typically, they're always administered in the spring, and it's after several months of learning of that grade-level material. So what was interesting and unique about the Start Strong assessments is that they were administered in the fall. And they were intended to give and produce very quick, standards-based information to provide and evaluate the needs of students, and it's a complement to the resources that we use. So we have many of our own assessments that we put in place aligned with standards, knowing that we were tasked and responsible for really developing a complete digital portfolio for each student so that we can capture and measure learning along the way. These assessments were administered quickly, in person, and they provided immediate results. And what that means is some, at some grade levels, it was as few as 10 questions. Some were 18 questions. The Start Strong satisfied a federal statewide assessment requirement to administer general assessments in English, Language Arts, Mathematics, and Science for only the 2021, 2020, 2021 school year, and will resume with our regular testing schedule this spring. Start Strong, this is super important to consider. Start Strong Fall 2021 Assessments do not replace local standards-based benchmark assessments district may have already have in place, and they do not replace the Spring 2022 NJSLA statewide summative assessments that are predictive of their results. So once again, one thing that we did not touch on, or probably communicate well enough in the fall, is that we were administering the grade-level assessment, capturing data about completion of standards that students hadn't even had an introduction to. When publicly reporting assessment results, consider the impacts of COVID. We know that the situation varied from student to student. We had at-home learners. We had students who were here every other day. We had periods where we were not in person at all, and that did impact learning significantly for all of our students, whether it was academically or just mentally. It was a challenge for many to be learning from home. It is suggested that districts not compare any individual student-school district Start Strong data to any state-level data for Start Strong, nor should comparisons be made to any NJSLA data. And I put in, however, and I will share why on the next slide, please note that the Start Strong assessments were not designed to predict future student performance on the NJSLA, nor was it designed to estimate what score a student would have received if they had taken the NJSLA in the Spring 2021. So this gives us a lot more to think about. I think we all jumped to many conclusions when we saw the preliminary results, which were concerning. I felt much better after putting together this slide, and it's really important because we have a side-by-side comparison. And if you look over to the rate column where it says level three, less support may be needed, so these are the students who performed better. You can see that in Wayne, we outperformed the state at every grade level. So that was really good news for us. Overall, if you look at the combined less support and some support, we did fairly, I think we did really well in Wayne. And then, obviously, the concern is where strong support is needed. And again, we have fewer students than the rest of New Jersey, which is a good sign for us. But again, my priority is our students in Wayne, and that's why we have put so many intervention programs in place. We have all of our own local benchmarks. We're fortunate in that we've been prioritizing data-driven instruction for the past several years. We've invested in a software solution, LinkIt, to gather this information, and instruction is differentiated by student, by classroom, by grade level. Pacing is looked at based on how students perform. So this is work that we've been doing and doing very well. This slide is a side-by-side comparison with New Jersey and Wayne. And once again, look over to the right for less support needed in math. We did much better at every grade level than the state overall. And on the left, where strong support may be needed, same thing, fewer students than looking at the state numbers and the state averages. So that is really good news for us, and we were really happy to see this. We've hired to report out on the Start Strong test design. So these were short tests, again, some grade levels, 10 questions, some went up to 17 or 18. It was based on a subset of prioritized prior-year academic standards. You know, there's some examples. We'll post this slide online tomorrow. But it's important to note that the Language Arts Assessment for students in grades four to eight included only 10 questions. And also to remember that the last normal year of schooling for fourth-grade students was first grade, because we have been, this is our third year of the pandemic. Again, I said this early on, but just reminding you that they took this assessment early in the year after not having a full year of instruction where students weren't every day since first grade. And we'll see. Once they take the spring assessment, it is a much longer assessment, much broader assessment, greater depth, and I think that it'll be a much better measure combined with our local assessments for student proficiency before we infer anything. Going to go through these next few slides real quickly. This one just specifically details which grade levels were assigned to which assessments. This slide shows a number of students at each grade level who took each content area Once again, this is just the Wayne data. I compared it to New Jersey on a previous slide. And once again, Wayne Township outperformed the state in all areas, having more students needing less support. This slide details a number of students in each grade level by category for English Language Arts. This slide details a number of students in each category level for Mathematics, and this slide for Science. On this slide, I think it's important to note that attendance during the pandemic had a significant impact on student performance. We were operating on a hybrid schedule at times. And this slide starts a series of slides, which highlights the school-level performance by the grade-level test. So I'm going to go through these real quick, and again, this will be posted online for anyone who wants to take a closer look tomorrow. This is grade five English Language Arts by school. Grade four Math, Math by school. Grade five Mathematics by school. Grade six Language Arts, middle schools, broken up by middle school. Grade seven Language Arts, broken up by middle school. Grade eight Language Arts, broken up by middle school. Grade 8 Language Arts, broken out by Middle School. Math, this is Grade 6, broken out by Middle Schools. Grade 7, Support Levels, broken out by Middle Schools for Math. Math, Grade 8, broken out by Middle Schools. Algebra 1, broken out by Middle Schools. English Language Arts, Grade 9, broken out by High Schools. English Language Arts, Grade 10, broken out by High Schools. Algebra 1, broken out by High Schools. Geometry, broken out by High Schools. Algebra 2, broken out by High Schools. These are our subgroups, broken out by race. Math percentages for subgroups broken out by race. The previous slide was Language Arts. Science, broken out by race. At this slide, we have English Language Arts, broken out by gender. This is Math, broken out by gender. Science, broken out by gender. English Language Arts, we have the percentages for subgroup program. Mathematics, Science. And I thought this was really important to share, because again, this just details the last normal year of school at each grade levels that our students had. So you can see our kindergartners are in school for the first time. First graders, second graders had never had a normal year in school until this year. Grade 3, the last time they had a full, regular school year was when they were in kindergarten. So there were a lot of other things to consider when kids were coming into school, just accumulating to a school day. At our last discussion, algebra was also a point of concern, and we had a discussion about that, and I wanted to highlight and share here. It's really important to note that our 8th graders were being assessed in the fall on 8th grade standards that they're being taught now. So our spring assessment will be a much better way to gauge proficiency and student learning. Any questions or comments from board?
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, sure. Yeah.
Thanks, Scott.
If there's any agenda?
Yes, we have some today. In the section marked emergent. T, emergent human resources. We have changes on T number 5, approval of district staff. Number 4, add salary, $58,970 is prorated at Step 6, VA 15 of the WBA salary guide to start April 11, 2022, or as soon as possible. T number 10, approval of additional hours, minutes, there's a change, we're going to revise line number 1. A is Nancy Catano, C-A-T-A-N-O, from JF to LAF, and we'll be adding a T 13, which reads as follows. It's an approval of administrative leave, T 13, resolved at the Board of Ed upon the recommendation of superintendent, place employee ID number 4171 on administrative leave for the period from February 2 through February 11, 2022. And that includes the additions and changes to tonight's agenda.
Thank you. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on agenda items only. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings on their old business. Motion, second?
Okay, please. I wanted to talk to, my name is Danielle Canato, and I came here to talk about something else tonight, but I'll come back up later and talk about that. This is my son Vincent, and he goes to Anthony Wayne, he's in 6th grade. I'll talk about the other thing later, but I came, I wasn't going to talk about this tonight, but I saw that it was on the agenda, the Start Strong program. My son took it, and he actually got in Level 2. Some support may be needed for Math, ELA, and Science. Science was very low, because last year, in 5th grade, they did not teach most of the Science program, because it was virtual most of the time. But when he was allowed to go into school, he was in school every day. But the problem that I have with this is not that the children have lower scores, you know, they just started school, and the assessment was at the beginning, it's the extra help that's being provided for the children. Now, in the summer, there was extra help programs for all children, children on every level, and IEP children, and my son's in the IEP program. Now, today I asked, when are the extra help classes, you know, to get extra time and extra practice with ELA and Math? And I was told that the new extra help classes did not include IEP children. Now, that to me is discrimination. If they were offered in the summertime for children with IEPs, my son took the two-week program, and they were offered to children at all levels. They had, you know, IEP teachers teach the IEP kids, and regular teachers teach the regular kids. Now, how come the after-school and before-school programs now don't include them? And is there going to be a program later on in the summertime? And I was told today that they, by Mrs. Reichman, that they're not included, because they're in the IEP program in their classes, but they're not getting the extra time. They were out of school the same time as the other children, and they're not getting extra time. Like, in their classes, they're just doing the regular work. They're not getting, like, extra skills work, they're not, they're just not getting extra time, and I think it's discrimination. If you're going to have extra classes and extra help, like in the summertime for all children, this time should be for all children too. The kids in special and in IEP programs should not be excluded. That's what I want to talk about.
Hey, everybody. I'm sure you guys all missed me. Mark Chamberlain, Wayne, Wester. I want to talk about common sense and critical thinking and the policies that we've seen put in place for the last couple of years. First one I want to talk about is the masking of teachers along with the testing mandates for the teachers. So I think everybody here could agree that we all know that COVID is transmitted by vaccinated people as well as unvaccinated. If you don't believe that, then you're literally under a rock, because I caught it from someone who was fully vaccinated and boosted. And the question I have is, why do we have a policy in place where if it's meant to protect children, why are only unvaccinated teachers testing for COVID weekly? Why is it not required that anybody that can transmit the virus has to test weekly? If you're telling me you're there to protect my kids? Because not testing everybody does not protect my kids. Now, you're all academics, so I think that should be a question that I would think you guys should have thought of, but didn't. Now, I've heard from, you know, other people and other things that have come out from the NJEA. The NJEA now wants to start this conversation about the mask removal, and they want it to be where if you're vaccinated, you can pull your masks, if you're not, you know, the kids are going to have to wear masks in school. Again, the logic of that makes absolutely no sense, because anybody can transmit this. There's an article that came out from the NJEA, they're fully against it, and they want it to go backwards. So I'm asking you to think about that as well, because it follows the same lack of logic as your testing policy for teachers. Lastly, that presentation about the rankings of our kids and all the testing and all that, I'm sorry, but I do not find any comfort in fact that our kids did better than people in the rest of the state. That does not tell me anything or make me feel better that, you know, other kids are doing worse, so that makes me feel better. I worry about what my kids are doing and what my school system is providing. And that lack, that loss of learning is actually partially to blame for the policies that you have enacted. And, you know, we've all been talking about this now for six months, eight months, and we've been saying that a lot of the things that are detrimental to the kids, like mask wearing and all of that, is going to come back, and it's going to have direct impact on their learning. And it has. Now, the studies are starting to come out about how children are learning less when they're wearing masks. And these are all things that we tried to explain to you guys months ago. So now, you know, it's coming out that this is the fact. So I'm going to beg you guys to stop with all of the academic thought and think about things in theory, and start to look at things in practice, because there's a very big difference between what you read in books and what you're, you know, what you're going to think is going to happen, and how people react and the impacts on people in reality. That's the same, I'm not going to get into the curriculum tonight, because that's a whole other topic, but it's along the same lines as those things, that things that you're looking to implement sound great in theory, but are not good in practice. So.
Mr. Fair, oh, thank you. Here's your time.
Have a good night.
You too.
Yeah, he just told you.
Because it was still running.
Good evening. Jennifer Layton, 48 Terrace Road, Wayne. Good evening, board members. I haven't been to a meeting for a few weeks due to the birth of my son, so I just want to start out by congratulating and welcoming our new board members. It's so nice to see you sitting here today. With that said, I come to tonight's meeting with cautious optimism for the students of our Wayne Public School System. After the governor's announcement, I had fully expected to come and present the board with another speech about the importance of parental choice when it came to masking. But to my surprise, you quickly responded with what we've been asking for for months, and that was the option to wear masks around in school. So thank you for that. I want to thank you for taking this important step, because it has renewed some of my faith that our voices are being heard. We now know that with the ever-evolving science, that one-way masking is effective for those who choose to continue to mask, and that students and staff in our buildings have now had the time to make the proper medical decisions for themselves that would allow them to feel safe in the school environments that they teach and learn in. As a New Jersey public school educator of 13 years, the last two years have certainly been the hardest for me. I've seen the social, emotional, and mental toll that the pandemic has taken on our most vulnerable and impressionable minds. I've witnessed listless children, emptyly staring into screens during the failure that was virtual instruction, and have endured watching teary-eyed children literally beg their children, literally beg their teachers to take their masks off, pleading that they were not sick. I will never forget this. I will, I will forever blame the powers that be in Trenton, including my own union and the state, for perpetuating this on our children. But with that being said, I am asking the board, and I'm asking teachers who feel the same way, to stand with me, even outside of union lines, and make sure that this never happens again. Our children cannot afford these continued losses in learning, and they certainly cannot afford to lose any more of their childhood. What I am now asking of the board is to make clear in the upcoming weeks the updated protocols for masked optional students. We have seen that there has been a disparity in the way that vaccinated versus unvaccinated children are being treated when it comes to close contact and quarantine. Will this further that disparity? My hope is that all are treated equitably moving forward. Again, I thank this board for taking the time to hear my concerns, and I'm excited to see a new, more normal chapter of education in our town on hold. Thank you.
Good evening. Brooke Coral, 36 Lawrence Road. I'm going to continue to speak about masks tonight, because I'm of the mindset that every day from here until March 7 should already be March 7. While everyone has been supposedly celebrating the bone that Philip Murphy threw the state of New Jersey this week, the truth is that what he did was unlawfully and illegally extend his emergency powers for another month, at the cost of our children and babies in the school districts who continue to comply are the henchmen complicit in carrying out these crimes against our most innocent and vulnerable, our kids. Anyone who cannot see the gross and vast damage that has been done to these children is either in denial, willfully ignorant, or evil. We continue to go to our sporting events, concerts, shopping, vacations, supermarkets, with the choice to be masked or unmasked. Yet how have we justified placing the heaviest burden on our children, demanding that their mouths and noses remain muzzled with damp, dirty cloth for hours on end, not only restricting breathing, but inhibiting speech development, articulation, and their ability to read facial expressions and learn social cues? No matter how much fear you personally possess regarding this virus, the fact remains that this virus poses about as much of a threat to these kids as seasonal flu. Take this commentary from a speech therapist in Maryland. The cost of these humane restrictions. The speech issues I see in 3- and 4-year-olds that have been masked I've never seen before in my 22-year career. So much low muscle tone, drooling, unusual articulation errors in early-developing sounds. History will not look kindly on those in positions of authority who carried out these nonsensical and cruel orders and mandates, all the while claiming to have no choice and that their hands were tied for the sake of funding. What about the children's sake? Something very grave and tragic has happened over these last two years, and that is that our children were used as pawns in a sick political game, and the mandatory masking continues, flying in the face of science and evidence showing their futility. At the end of all this, in the words of Barry Rice, you will realize, most importantly, that this is going to be remembered by the younger generations as a catastrophic moral crime. Once again, we ask this board to stand up for our children and send a letter to Philip Murphy, urging him to rescind the extension of the mask mandate, and tell them that these children should be masked, not one day more.
Nicholas Stellianasis?
Nicholas, just give me one second, please. Just as a reminder, when you come up to speak, just please keep your masks on while everybody's speaking. Thank you very much.
Nicholas Stellianasis, 576 Valley Road. I am now to speak on masking. I want to thank the district, Dr. Tobak, for sending it out, that you will rescind the mask mandate on March 7. Though I need to look at the calendar every which direction to see how quick this month could go by, because I cannot bear one more day of it. I've been treated like this for two years by this state, and me and my fellow students have been forgotten about by this state. And finally, something has been given to us. I hope that this decision does not change, because if it does, it'll be the biggest disappointment that any student has ever had. The students and the teachers have accepted this, and that we will not have a mask mandate anymore. It is time to get back to normal and keep this. And I heard earlier that the board will vote on the policy tonight, and I hope that the board, the board decides, has the correct decision in favor of the students, not just the teachers' union, that has been treated so well over the past few years by this state. I am praying that I will never have to hear the word "mask up" ever again in my life, because these years are two years that I will look on as the worst years of my life, where I feel like my life was confined to one little bubble of a mask every single day I was in school, where I was mistreated by being yelled at all the time about a mask that is not naturally supposed to be on my face. I am done with wearing a mask. I will wash my hands, I do wash my hands. I understand the virus, I just want a chance to feel normal again. I hope you stick to this decision. Thank you.
See nobody else come to the podium? Second?
Now, we'll move forward to a reading of the committee minutes.
One more person coming to the podium.
Do we have another open?
They'll pay another round.
There's another, there's a second round of public comment.
Okay, so I missed it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll stand and speak loudly. Finance Committee. This evening, the Finance Committee met with myself, Mr. Pavlak, Mr. Fatale, administrators William Moffett and Cheryl Lydic. We had quite a bit on the agenda now that budget season is here. We discussed multiple financial reports that are produced month- We discussed multiple financial reports that are produced monthly. The treasurers report the operating and enterprise funds were discussed. Transportation contracts, which are on the agenda, were reviewed. Contract revisions for psychological services and the replacement vendor were discussed. That will be on our emergent part of the agenda. Budget transfers, not necessary this month. Ryerson is going to receive a partial roof placement. The money will be coming from our maintenance fund, and that's going out for bid. Security vestibules at Wayne Valley High School, Anthony Wayne Middle School, and JFK Elementary School will be receiving vestibules paid for by the Alyssa's Law Grant, going out for bid in March. Those are tremendous projects, quite expensive, and we won't be paying a cent of local taxpayer money. We discussed the cost of our upcoming health and dental for next year that will be going into the budget. We're waiting for information from our broker. It's really too soon to tell what the increase will be. That's always a nail-biter until we receive that information, and it's a large impact on the budget. Surplus projection. Oh, okay. So we may be short in some areas, which would affect how much we can roll into surplus, and that would be the preschool and some revenues that we normally receive from facilities used in rentals. And we're not quite sure what next year's extraordinary aid will be. We had a bit of a windfall this year, but it was an anomaly. Enterprise operations were discussed. We're going after all available, oh, no, that's Esser, sorry. Food service is doing much better now that students can eat in school. We actually are in a plus position where we can invest some money in equipment. My first recommendation was pizza ovens. There's never enough pizza. So before and after care is also doing well in the black, but preschool is down. So if you know anybody who needs a good preschool, send them on over to Wayne. Esser funds were discussed. We're going after every available dime that we can get, and most of that has already been earmarked and applied for, and we'll have a presentation on that coming soon for the public. Revenue projection. Well, there's going to be a delay, as Dr. Tobak mentioned earlier, in our state aid numbers, so we're waiting for that. We have a maintenance reserve account that began at three point eight million. So far, we've used quite a bit of it for a roof, an HVAC upgrade, another roof, and from that three point eight, we're down to eight forty-four. So we're hoping to bank some money there before, during this budget cycle from the excess from the audit. Our capital reserves started out at eight point six million, and again, we invested in a lot of projects, science labs, security cameras, et cetera. So that fund is now at three point eight million. So another fund that will need some replenishing. And that's it for now. More to come.
Ms. Kumar.
The Education Committee met tonight. Myself, Ms. Wenteck, and Ms. Reichman were in attendance, along with Paula Clark. We reviewed policies, the two policies that are up for vote today. And then we discussed a new club at Skylar Colfax on community building, the updated computer science curriculum, residency requests, the transitional skills, community-based instructions. We went over policy related to that and how that program would work. We also went over the possibility of a sovereign intervention programs pending funding. Went over the Rutgers Paraprofessional Coaching Project to help our paraprofessionals, the three-year plan for English language learners. We're also looking at a curriculum for a sixth-grade seminar for them to learn study skills and organizational skills, which is really important. And we discussed the honor roll policy, so it needs to be updated. There are things that are in that policy that need to be looked at, and then it's going to be coming back to committee for discussion at the next meeting, the next time we meet. And that concludes my report.
Mr. Duffy.
Tonight, the Technology Safety Committee met, myself, Mr. Bubba, Mr. Prusakos, and Mr. Jobash. I could sit here and bore you all with the recall of charging cords. Solved that problem relatively quickly. We talked about the retention of emails for the next seven years that were required by federal regulations. Our Chromebooks, when they go out and don't work anymore, have zero value, except for scrap, as well as our TVs, our old-school TVs that we all grew up with, with the tubes, not worth anything. We've now put a filter in, we've had a filter, we're updating the filter to go after the two thousand, two hundred thousand websites that continually come up daily, which prevent pornography sites, gambling sites, all the stuff that we don't want our children to see. Federal funds, we have for that, and that's about it. Really eventful meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion? Duffy? At this point, I would move over to the agenda.
I'd like to move the entire attendance consent agenda. Second.
Discussion on the agenda?
I just have a general question related to the masking policy, only because as we are talking about making masks optional, my question is, how will that affect our quarantine and isolation policy? Is there going to be an update to that policy?
So right now, the state provided us with information about the lifting of the masking requirement on March seventh. There is follow-up guidance that they'll be providing, so that would be other actions the board could take at a later time. It would not affect necessarily the part of the policy or the appendices that are being ruled upon tonight, but it could affect some of the other appendices at a later time. So we do not have all the latest guidance. State is still in the process of producing additional guidance. Mr. Bubba.
I just have one thing. I'm not even sure if it's tonight or not, but we're taking the donation from the Jets for the Wayne Valley. It's eight thousand dollars. Is there interest at Wayne Hills?
Yes.
So if there is, can we just match up this year, and then we'll get the money next year for it and start to fervent? Is it this way, we're not in one versus the other?
Could.
I would like to see that.
So financially, that would be something that the board would be able to do. We would have to, in addition to the eight thousand dollars, we'd also need to produce uniforms and all this stuff.
I understand. I'm just.
If you're looking for a cost, go to.
Can I suggest we have that brought up at the next Finance Committee meeting?
We can.
So that by then, we can have some actual numbers.
It would be best to put something in writing and have a resolution for the board vote.
And if it's feasible, we can make a recommendation to the full board.
As long as we're, you know, cause I don't wanna short-side run for a year. At this point in time, it's not legal.
Ask Ms. Tiki Shway.
Just ask her to give us the.
So that's why.
Tiki Shway.
Oh, Tiki Shway.
We could put something.
This is Jets, not Giants.
I said, ask her for the Giants.
Oh, okay. I didn't hear of the Giants.
So if the Finance Committee does not meet at the next meeting, it would probably be important to move along based on the timeline to start the season.
Oh, this is for this year or those for next year?
It's for this year.
Oh, okay. Well, that's a good reference.
So, you know, it's okay. I mean, like, if we can put together a resolution and certainly can be discussed by the full board, it seems to be of interest for the full board. So we can put together a resolution and then we find it.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I have one question about the quarantine and such.
Mr. Bubba?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Kazan?
Yes.
Ms. Kumar?
Yes.
Mr. Pavlak?
Yes.
Mr. Prusakos?
Yes.
Ms. Wenteck?
Yes.
And Mr. Fatale?
Yes.
Motion carried.
This portion of the meeting, we're gonna open back up for public comments. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens.
No, I'm sorry.
This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on any topic. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at a subsequent meeting under old business.
Can I get a move?
Come on.
One second.
Yes.
Hi, good evening. My name is Sal Biando of the twenty-three Ridge Place. First of all, thank you guys all for volunteering your time. I know it's a daunting task, but with that being said, I'm here to talk about Wayne Hills athletic programs. My son's a senior at Hills. He played high school sports for the love of the game, learned many life lessons, such as teamwork, physical fitness, and well-being, community representation, being a positive role model, and making social relationships. Here's my take after volunteering a lot of my time, attending school events, sporting events in particular, at the high school. Over the last few years at Hills, our sports teams experienced delays in weight training regimen due to purchase order issues, in weight training, weight sets, plates, weighted plates, bars. Believe it or not, it just came in this week after about a two-year wait. I've witnessed different guidelines for seatbelt safety depending on what school you're going to, and non-school buses, of course, not Wayne buses, but charter buses. Some guidelines are put in place with just a two-strap system, which is just the waist, while other schools were held to a different standard for a three-point waist and cross-chest restraint system. That costs certain programs a little bit more money than others, so we need to kind of streamline our guidelines more. I've witnessed unnecessary, overzealous supervision by some administrators to deter school spirit and pride during sporting events. I've also recently learned, even after the gym capacity limits were lifted, that we had people turned away at a high school basketball game. He was actually a Wayne Hills alumni, and the college recruiter was right behind him. They both got turned away. Some of these things, I really don't like to bring up, but I mean, I feel like they could be brought to light, because it's been ongoing. This past fall, we had some Booster Club guidelines that were introduced to us. Granted, they were an amended copy, but now tabled by Dr. Tobak, which we appreciate. These guidelines caused a little bit of fear, panic amongst many Booster Club parents, creating work for, extra work for volunteers. These same guidelines were published and distributed without consent from every Booster Club president, with their private phone numbers and email addresses published on and distributed to dozens of people. Thankfully, again, these guidelines were tabled. But since this time, Booster Club parents have communicated regularly. Many concerns have been brought to light about outdated facilities at Wayne Hills.
Mr. Biando? That's three minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
My name is Big Al Piana. I came here tonight to talk about the honor roll, well, the lack of honor roll, actually, that I found out. My son, you know, he just started sixth grade, and he got straight A's amazingly this marking, this past marking period. And the first marking period, he almost got straight A's. One art class, he got eighty-nine, and the rest all A's. So I didn't think there was an honor roll, didn't look into the honor roll the first marking period, because I figured, you know, he didn't get all A's, so he wouldn't be on it. So the second marking period, I said, oh, that's great. You got straight A's, you'll be on the honor roll. And I called the principal, Anthony Wayne. He says, no, there's no honor roll. You know, I haven't heard of it. I started here in 2013, never had it. So I said, how can there not be an honor roll? I grew up here, went to school here, like, I have friends here, and we've always had the honor roll, like, especially in middle school. I don't, I don't remember high school, but I remember middle school. So I looked into it, and it's, it's like a positive thing. I don't know how anybody could think it's negative for children. It's a very positive thing that they could, you know, work towards, especially after the last two years that we've had. And to my surprise, nobody knew about it, and they didn't know. Some people knew about it and didn't know when it ended. And then, you know, I sent out emails, and I said, wait a second, let me just go look. Like you say, look at the policies online. And I found the policy right there online, and it says it's from two thousand nine, and it was edited in two thousand eleven. So I know, I just heard you say that you talked about it in your, in your meeting, but I couldn't hear what you said, what, what happened, because it's like, it's hard to hear back here. So I don't know, are you gonna, are you gonna be able to have the honor roll back again? I heard you say something, like, you talked about it today, but I couldn't hear what you said back there. The education thing?
I believe during comments later, it will be addressed. If you didn't hear, it shows.
Oh, yeah. I heard you said that you did talk about it, but I couldn't hear, like, what you said, something about next, next meeting, but I didn't hear. Okay.
I think, yeah, just during board comments at the closing, don't reiterate on that.
I just found it look amazing that it was just sitting right there on a, right there on the website, five minutes looked up right there on the website, and everybody's like, oh, no, no doubt the honor roll. And it's just amazing. It's like your policies, that's what made me upset the most. It's not that the honor roll was gone, it's that you didn't even know your policy was right there on, on the website. That makes me just really have, like, no faith in, like, what's going on. And what I forgot to say before about the extra help classes, too, you know, you're receiving money from the government, the money should go to all the children. It should not, you should not be having extra help classes right now after school and before school, and excluding special-ed children and children that are in the IEP classes. So, I mean, my son has regular science, a regular social studies, and I heard that the extra help is for social studies and science at Skylar Colfax. Now, what's that about? I mean.
Ms. Piana? Piana, I'm sorry. That's three minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi, Ellen Adamacoli, thirty-one Grandview Drive. I wasn't going to speak today. I'm shaking, very nervous. But as I'm here, something has come inside me, and I need to express what I've been feeling. I wanna walk you guys through bedtime in my home. Shower, bed, decompress, read a story to my son. After that's done, the tears pour. Pour down, asking me, mommy, when am I gonna take my mask off? Why is it so hot in the classroom? How come I can't breathe? This is, these are the conversations that I have to have with my son, and I know, I know I'm not the only parent having those conversations. So I'm excited that the mask is being lifted come March seventh, but I hope that doesn't give you plenty of time to come up with stipulations. To breathe, they deserve to smile. I recently got a letter, you've mentioned quarantine just in your previous discussions, about possibly lifting them. I got a letter from the school saying that my son has missed too many days of school, and that I should take interest in that, being that it could affect his academics. Why did he miss those days of school? Tested for COVID. First, I tested positive. I was told he wasn't able to come back to school until my last quarantine ended. Then my husband tested positive. That would have taken his ten days to another twenty days of missing school. How are these kids doing well in school? How are they getting any sort of education? How are these kids doing well in school? How are they getting any sort of education? Our test scores clearly are showing that our kids are failing. They, we, we need to do some change. We need to take the masks off. We need to stop the quarantine. We need to go back to normal life and let our kids be happy and free. APC has a program, No Place For Hate. Our school is a complete place of hate. There's no kids that want to go there. They're just, they don't want to go to school anymore. They don't want to learn. This isn't normal. So I take, I hope that you've taken into consideration, you have a long time to come up with stipulations on taking off this mask. I hope you stick to it and actually back parents up, back these students up because they're, they're trusting in you. And Ms. Kazan has said many times that parents don't show up to the meeting, so you think that they're okay with it? No, they're not okay with it. Maybe they can't come. Have you taken into consideration that they have to take extra jobs on because of the financial burden that has impacted them from COVID? Have you taken into consideration that maybe they're, don't want to miss their kids' games because that's the only sort of normalcy that their kids have where their masks free, running around smiling and playing with their friends? So I just highly stress and encourage you to please make these changes. Thank you.
Good evening. Pam Masick. Mr. Duffy, I thought that was a really valuable point that you said about the filters, that they need to be updated for the websites. It caused me to have a question. I'd like to know what the policy is for the standard of that which is deemed pornographic for these filters and where I can see that in writing, whether it's pornographic or any other inappropriate content that we want filtered on the websites. So if I can please be told where I can get that, that would be amazing. Number one. Number two, I'm, I'm highly ignorant, but wanting to learn about the Esser funds and I'd like to know where we can see in writing money's come in, money's gone out, what the projects are, you know, we're all, I think the election expressed we're longing for more transparency, accountability. So I'd like to see some things in writing, not just anything general. I'd like to support the voting on the honor roll. My son, he's a senior and this past semester, he got all A's. The one before that, he got all A's and one B and he's not involved in sports or other activities and the group that he hangs out with is not either. So this honor roll, besides him having a perfect attendance and notarities, these are the things that he can build on because not every child is sports-minded or into athletics or, or the band or things or art. So that honor roll is something that they could use for their portfolio, especially in high school. So please consider that. Also, I learned just recently that there is an, some kind of an afternoon trade school that I believe the seniors can attend. We never knew about it. I don't know if that is posted somewhere or parents are involved. Again, I could be ignorant and I'd like to have some information on that. If a child goes there in the afternoon, a student, a senior, does, does that mean if he attends that trade school, that the, the high schools here get less money? I, I'd just like to know, you know, I, I, I'm wondering why because he, he doesn't want to go to college. He wants to go to trade school, which I think can be admirable. I have a few plumbers in my clan and I think what he wants to do should be supported and he could have benefited from knowing about that. So those are my four points and I'm hoping I can get some information. Thank you very much.
Hi, everyone. Maria Delucaprenda, Wayne resident. I also just wanted to-
Excuse me, what? Could you send over?
Sure. Maria Delucaprenda, Wayne resident. I also just wanted to speak out in support of reimplementation of the honor roll. I also grew up here in Wayne and have fond memories of middle school and high school days of being on the honor roll and, and just wanted to make some points on that. The honor roll is unlike other academic recognition programs in that it recognizes short-term academic achievement. Unlike other programs which recognize longer-term academic achievement, like being in the National Honor Society or whatever. So that means that more students will have the opportunity to get that recognition that they might otherwise not be eligible for. I also think that because of the nature of the program, it, it, it emphasizes positive recognition and reinforces that positive behavior that allowed those students to get, to, to be eligible to be on the honor roll. And then they are, of course, more likely to duplicate those behaviors that got them there. Given the academic challenges faced with COVID, it is even more important to recognize students on a short-term basis to, to overcome the challenges that they faced in the last couple of years. So I, I encourage you to consider that when thinking about reestablishing the honor roll. It's also something that's a low-cost, low-operational policy and, and program to implement. So I, I would ask that for, you know, the upcoming school year, that the Board consider that and the administration consider doing that and bringing back the honor roll. So, thanks.
I promise it won't be too much longer. Again, Sal Biando, 23 Ridge Place. So since the guidelines were tabled, the Booster Club parents have began communicating regularly. Many concerns have been brought to light regarding the outdated facilities, such as the basketball court and the gymnasium, the baseball field, the main turf field bleachers, press box, and porta potty stall situation and safety concerns within them down by the field, as well as a small targeting lot in the entrance circle of the front of the high school. It looks like it really hasn't been paved in many, many years. We also failed miserably on our website. If you go to Wayne Hills High School right now, the website, click on the Athletic tab, you still have girls tennis, live scoreboard being screened across the screen. Haven't played since fall. There's no update, updated rosters for current teams. Many winter sports games score in order, scores are missing, and so much more. With that being said, I think the administration needs to do better. We need to think more proactively, with more transparency. We need passionate leaders that show true patriot pride and Indian pride and to advocate for all the student athletes. We need to hire, hire administrators who will put in the work now and get these kids back on the field to play. Thank you.
Ryan Badshill, 33, Comer Drive.
I can't hear you.
Sorry. You want me to take off?
Speak louder.
I'll try. So last year, Dr. Toback offered to get the parents involved sometime in the spring to start talking about the new curriculum changes and to start getting involved with this. I'd like to know when we're going to hear about that and when we can start getting involved with those curriculum changes so that we can start hopefully avoiding all of the things from last year that were considered.
Can I ask one question? No, one more question. That's the second time. It's not to be facetious. It's a genuine question. I was listening to the PowerPoint and the statistics and how it was referenced this gender and this gender. And the question that popped out of my mouth is, if we're teaching the children there's more than two genders, how can you be taking a study on two genders? It just reflects the insanity of the subject. And how, I'd like to know how this Board is going to navigate this situation and address that because I, it's, it's adding confusion. It's just, it's more insanity. So that's something, I don't know if anybody thought about that when you were giving the report, but please consider that and see how it's going to be addressed.
So you know where you're at?
Second.
Old business. New business. Ms. Winting?
Add two points, Ms. Winting. One, I would like to start discussing moving the public work session meetings to a different location since there's plenty of people who have been hurt and here as well and be, you know, safety involved, that I would like us to start talking about possibly moving it to one of the high schools or the chambers if it's open. And my point number two was I would like to do a motion to have the public speaking portion increased to five minutes from three minutes. Thank you.
You make a motion? Is that a motion?
Yes.
I'll second.
So we should have a discussion.
Yeah, we have to find out what the resolution is.
Say exactly what you think.
Okay. So-
Do you want to-
The point one was to have a discussion about changing the location.
Is that a motion?
That's not a motion.
Not a motion, okay. Discussion. Okay. So the motion is to increase the public speaking portion from three minutes to five minutes. That's motion.
I'll second.
Discussion.
Well, first, Mrs. Winting, I'd like to point out a few things. You're asking for a policy change. I know you're a new board member. You haven't completed your training yet. But we have a process for that. We have a process for everything. The last time we made a change to that policy, I think it took four meetings before we finally rang the bell on it and there was a final vote. We have a committee system. If the Board has consensus this evening to even entertain your motion, it needs, it needs to be written. We can't vote on a policy that's not in front of us, like the policy we voted to revise this evening was on our agenda. So a simple vote here this evening cannot change a policy. If the Board wants to continue with this discussion, we can certainly entertain it, but it would have to be written. Unless you brought a written one with you.
No, I did, I did speak to the Board President ahead of the time and she had suggested that I do that today.
Well, this is a starting point. I just want you to understand that this is a starting point. This is not something we can determine this evening. Because again, the policy has to be written. There may be some other ideas from the Board about how they would like to revise this policy. So I think that's what this discussion should contain this evening.
Okay.
So I would make a secondary motion to remove the, or ask you first to remove the motion so that we can just follow our normal process, have the discussion and defer it to committee. And then we'll bring it for a first reading after it's written. That's the process. If the Board Attorney would like to weigh in, go ahead.
Sir, you brought a motion and seconded it is under discussion, so you do have the opportunity to vote on it. It is true that our Policy 167 controls the time limits. It's moved from five minutes to three minutes. It would require a change in the policy to do that. Our normal process is to refer the matter to the Policy Committee to prepare a written policy to vote on and then to bring it up for a public vote at the next reporting.
Yeah, it's a simple process.
That's the way our policy works and how we typically approach it.
And there might be Board members that want to do other things to this policy. I, five minutes for myself, I would be amenable to it, but then I would want an overall time limit because you're adding to the amount of time that people can speak and Board members are volunteers. We start here at 4:30 for the most part. And as it is, most meetings were here until late in the evening. So if you're going to add another two minutes to everyone's comments, and so far this evening, everyone's been able to get their point across in three. I think everyone was able to speak and one or two people got it.
If I could just interrupt you one second to the chair. Not only is everybody able to get their point across in three minutes, they do have a second bite of the apple coming in for an additional six minutes. So you actually have an additional minute more than five.
Well, yeah, you wouldn't get a, I, I wouldn't approve of a second bite of the apple in five minutes. Because again, you know, this is, we already have a generous policy based on what other Boards do throughout the state. That was all done and investigated when we started the discussion of changing the policy last year. This isn't something we just surprised the Board with at a meeting. It was discussed fully. Board members were for certain things, against certain things. We took the time to change those things because we want to work together as a unit and make sure that everyone's opinion is in the final product.
Mr. Pavlak?
Perhaps Mrs. White act would amend her motion to five minutes and refer it to, to the Policy Committee.
Well, we would need consensus.
Well, you're going to get consensus on a vote. There's a motion and a second on the floor, so you have to vote. Either vote it up or you vote it down.
Well, if I'm going to take this to the Policy Committee, I want to hear what the Board wants, not just what Mrs. Winting wants. I want to hear what everybody wants.
Wait, wait.
We have the opportunity to discuss it.
Hold on, hold on one second.
Can I, I can maybe shed some light that might end this right now.
We just have a second motion by Ms. Kazan that-
You made a motion to remove.
Well, I asked her if she would. I asked her if she would.
The answer is, is a no, you're not accepting.
Mr. Bubba?
We have, we changed the policy, if I'm not mistaken, in August. I think that was, okay. I believe we have six months that we have to leave the policy in place, correct? You would know probably better than I would.
It's never come up before. I always felt there was a time limit, but that would be a question.
Is there, is, is there, John, a time we have to have the policy in, in, in place before we can amend it again?
No, I mean, the Board has the discretion to, to amend the policies when they choose to. Typically, it's under a two-leading policy process and then you go from there.
Okay, because- I was under the assumption it was six months, which we would be at six months in, at the end of this month and then everything would be open after that, but if it, there's, if we're not.
If I could just, if I can, so we have a, a motion on the floor, we have secondary to remove that failed second, secondary was-
The motion says to vote tonight. I don't know that we can do that.
To refer to-
She might have the language of a motion.
Mr. Pavlak?
Policy Committee.
To the Policy Committee.
To the Policy Committee.
And we're continuing the discussion after Mr. Bubba? Yeah, thank you. So- That wasn't accepted.
Did you ask her for an amendment or did you make a secondary motion, Don?
I asked her if she would, if she would agree with the-
That's what I was going to ask you, is if you would amend your motion to move it to the Policy Committee. With the five minutes.
With the five minutes.
Right. So you want five minutes. What do you want? Because if we're going to amend the policy, we need consensus of what everyone wants.
You send it into committee. They can come out of committee any way they want.
Well, I don't want to go through committee if you don't want, if you don't want to tell me what you want.
Okay, I'm in favor of five minutes, one shot, one time.
Okay, so Don, five minutes. EB, five minutes. But one bite of the apple.
One bite of the apple for me.
Same with-
Same with you?
Yes.
Okay.
Five minutes. Okay, one bite.
Five minutes, one bite.
No one wants an overall time limit because that's commonplace.
I just want to get Harry real quick.
Let me finish getting the, the information I need for Policy Committee. Mrs. Kumar, you were okay with?
I'm okay with five minutes if it's one bite. Yeah.
Versus the three with two. Sean.
I'd like to have a time limit.
In addition to the five minutes.
An overall time limit. I don't want to be here till midnight and to be honest with you, we've been here.
What do you suggest, 90 minutes? 90 is there?
I agree with that too.
Okay, Don, yes, 90 minutes. Ladies, are you listening?
Sorry, yes.
Harry, you were okay with that? Obviously you want the five minutes. You're okay with the one bite?
Yes.
You're okay with the overall? 90 minutes?
I don't need an overall, but yeah, I'm fine.
You'd be okay with that? You're okay with a 90-minute overall? Okay, so you're okay with 90 minutes?
Well, I think that might, and Mr. Gepfer, that might violate the sunshine law though if we go into another day.
Yeah, that's the problem.
Well, we've, we've been there.
We've been, we've done this.
I'm done it.
All right, who am I missing here?
Sorry about that.
Six, who am I missing? Oh, me. There you go. Just a little old me. It would be seven, there's not a rate.
Suzanne's in.
Well, we're nine members. I don't think I wrote you down. I only have one mic over here, so I need another mic. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Okay, so the consensus is, we'll go to- Okay, so the consensus is we'll go to five minutes, revise the policy to be voted on at the next meeting, and the overall time limit will be 90 minutes. We can always vote to increase the time if there's a hot button issue, but that will be the standing policy if we get a vote once it's written.
So does Mrs. Wintick have to pull her first or amend her?
She already amended it.
You already amended it.
To send it to the policy committee. I will ask.
There's a whole lot going on.
Yeah, I get it.
I will ask to convene a policy committee between now and the next meeting.
Yes, great, thank you. I guess I had my second point was to discuss the location of.
That's a ready in a policy as well. And it's the purview of the president once the board votes on it. We've already voted on the calendar for the year.
Can we discuss changing the location?
Well, if I could just ask.
We have to get through the first motion.
Okay. Sorry.
So we have to think of a. So we have the amended resolution that was introduced by Mrs. Wintick and seconded by Mr. Persakos and as discussed here. Show, if I can call it. Yes. Mr. Duffy?
To go to policy committees.
To go to policy. Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Mrs. Kumar?
Yes.
Mr. Padway?
Yes.
Mr. Persakos?
Yes.
Mrs. Wintick?
Yes.
Mr. Bubba?
Yes.
And Mr. Fatale?
Yes.
Motion passed as amended. All right.
So, if I may.
Yes.
Our policy currently reads that the board votes on a calendar at the beginning of the year. Any changes to that calendar are from the board president. She's not even here. So I think after being in only, what is it now, three meetings, Mrs. Wintick? I don't think you understand the value yet of our PWS meetings and the reason why we have them here. I mean, tonight, for instance, we would go long. We then have to drive our car over there. Trying to watch presentations like this are very difficult in that large room where the sound is awful, acoustics are horrible. I can't even see, let alone hear. So I think when we're working on things here that are important, presentations, et cetera, which is what work sessions are for. And understand that the public is not a factor of consideration with the two meetings per month. They're only entitled to one meeting a month. The second meeting was basically started for us so that we can actually get to the business of the board and not be distracted by things that are not important at the moment because there's the other meeting for that. So obviously, again, I'm not even sure that's something we could vote on unless, again, we want to do a policy change because that's the current policy.
So what's the policy say?
That we vote, we vote on the meetings and their location, et cetera, and our reorganization meeting, we produce a calendar and we've done that. Any changes after that are the purview of the president.
Okay.
So again, we would have to change a policy if we want to move that, change that decision.
Well, my suggestion, if the policy puts it within the purview of the president, that might be a reason for us to carry this to another meeting when at least the president is here to participate in the conference.
That would be smart.
I agree. I agree. Okay.
So I will read this resolution.
Mr. Persakos?
Acting President Fatale, given the discussion brought up by the public, specifically Ms. Farrell, in regards to a letter to Governor Phil Murphy, given that Dr. Tilbeck gave us the absolutely great news today that there were zero cases of COVID. If there's another specific, another amount of zero cases in a row, I would recommend, and this is up for discussion, and also to consult with Mr. Geppert here, that we communicate with Governor Murphy about providing special consideration or dispensation for the Wayne District and being proactive in possibly removing the masks earlier than. And then, Mr. Geppert, there's a.
Yeah, well, as I've said before, we're under an executive order, so we need to comply until that's changed. But I mean, if the board wants to consider a motion to ask him to change his mind, I mean, you could probably put that before the board if that's what you're asking.
So with that, I would like to make a motion that we do some form of communication, proactive communication, that we present to Governor Murphy that the Wayne District gets special consideration, given our zero case load in the Wayne District.
I'll second.
If we can, if we want to discuss first and decide, do we need, you know, three days in a row of zero cases or, you know, any specific amount, or if we just go ahead and, you know, communicate to Governor Murphy that we have a special consideration to do prior to the March 7th executive order.
So I just want to make sure that we have this correct. You're putting a motion out for a letter to be written or a form of communication to Governor Murphy that if we have zero COVID cases for.
X amount or, you know, whether it's.
Who, are you, who, are you going to write the letter or?
I can write the letter.
We went through this with the governor letter last year. We can't vote in the abstract, there has to be something in front of us.
Okay, I can present a letter by tomorrow.
Well, we can't vote on it. By the time we vote on it, we'll have like five days less of mask wearing. No offense, I mean, I get the point and it would be nice, but that's.
Mr. Duffy?
If I could, and being, being the person who brought this up at the last, the last time, I totally, totally understand, I totally agree. But as Ms. Kazan said, we, by the time you write the letter, we get back here in, in two weeks, we're, sorry.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. We're seven days of school. And to be honest with you, unless you write it on toilet paper, that's what he's going to do with it. So I, I do totally agree, but we have a light at the end of the tunnel and there's no reason to shake the cage. And that's just, I, I agree, but we're, we see a light. I, I, I totally get it, I'm with you, I wish it was yesterday.
I'll make a motion then that, given how we stand as a district, and I'll agree with you, that, you know, if, if the executive order does expire March 7th, that we will continue, that we will go with mask optional. But if, you know, he extends it for other reasons, then, then the letter gets voided. We can have a.
We need a motion for that, we could agree with you right now.
I think we all agree.
We're all sick and tired of it, we're ready to.
I made a motion for that.
Second.
You have my word.
The motion is.
Again, I don't know who's referencing, here's to state his motion.
Yeah.
So. The motion is, given our current status, to ensure that we'll be mask optional March 7th. If, if the governor, for whatever reason, extends his executive order beyond March 7th, we will then communicate immediately to Governor Murphy that we should have special consideration in our district.
Second. Yeah, you said communicate, what does that mean?
Whether email, letter, you know, whichever communication, email or letter.
Email, it's harder to do with a ladder.
Mr. Persakos?
Yes, he'll have that prepared for that.
I'll have it prepared.
For the first March meeting, if necessary.
Sure.
Get your draft going.
I had this, so.
Make sure it's two plus.
Mrs. Wintick, here it is.
Seconded?
Correct.
Mrs. Kumar?
I am actually going to abstain because we don't have the quarantine guidelines right now for the current masks optional, not that I won't necessarily do for it later, but right now, just because we have missing information, that's all.
Mr. Padway?
Oh, yes, but we could draft a letter right here, right now, but I'll go here still.
Mr. Persakos?
Yes.
Mrs. Wintick?
Yes.
Mr. Bubba?
Yes, I do think it's an exercise in futility, but yes. As Mr. Duffy said, this is going to end up, because he doesn't care.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes, as long as it's written on two plus.
Not going to amend the motion.
No amending the motion.
Yes, it's Kazan.
Yes.
Yes, but I hope we don't need that letter at all and from March 7th, we are mask optional, so yes.
Motion passes. Any other new business? Or comments?
I just wanted to go public and say I'm all for relaunching the honor roll in the, in the schools. So, you know, whatever it's worth to the education committee. And thank you to all the parents for, for coming out to express your opinion in this, in this tight, in these tight quarters here.
Mrs. Wintick?
Yeah, I also support the honor roll. I think it would be great addition for our district at almost zero to no cost with some boosters to the kids. I definitely support it and I agree.
Mr. Padway?
I do, I too support the honor roll. You know, we talk about social, emotional learning and where our kids are. Our kids haven't recovered, folks. And anybody who thinks just because they're back full time, they've recovered, has not been in a classroom. I can tell you, I am in a classroom every day. And no, they're still hurting, still hurting. And then you have the state school board who decides, oh, time to up the requirements for our seniors next year. We're not, and I'll shed a piece of light to those folks down there. Folks, it's not going to change that quick. We've got a long way to go. Our numbers look better. I'm still not happy with those numbers. We still have a long way to go.
Mrs. Kumar?
So I am in support of the honor roll. What we discussed at the meeting was that we have a policy. The policy itself is not mandated, we always have policies for things, but certain policies we absolutely have to follow, other ones we don't. I'm not quite sure, but there were different changes that were made, like adding a National Honor Society in middle school, which was part of the reason, to an extent, that the honor roll seemed to have gone to the wayside. But we're looking at that policy, like I said, we're looking at how we could revise it because it is out of date. We can't implement it the way it's written right now. So we're looking at it, we're having, all the administrators are looking at it and seeing what the best way to implement that policy might be and will be discussing that at the next education committee meeting. And there is a couple of things that were said that I think are pretty offensive, honestly, to this whole board, calling out our character in terms of whether or not we care about children. This is a volunteer position, we're all here for long hours, we all care about kids, we come at it from different angles, so just want to make that clear. And another piece of misinformation, I want to make very, very clear. If you are vaccinated, you have a much, much less chance of transmitting the virus. That is a fact. From the New York State Department of Health and Oregon, Oregon Department of Health. That is where I got that information. The New York State Department of Health and Oregon Department of Health. So that's it. Yeah. They're interrupting. So we're back in policies there that you don't even know that are online, thank you. Don't worry about the vaccine.
Everybody, can we just get through, can we just get through comments?
We're about policy being. Our party's fake.
Yeah, this is not the portion of the baby. They're interacting. Everybody.
And Arkansas is not answering this. We have similar policies related to measles and other vaccines and you have the option. That is all I'm going to say. Thank God.
Mr. Bubba? No, I just.
Well, yeah, I wanted to address a comment that was made about me personally. I think he said something about I don't think the other people in the, the other people in the community don't come because they're busy or whatever. Board meetings are not the only way to communicate. We, we made that very apparent last year when there were competing petitions and there were thousands of signatures on them. So while those people may not be able to attend a meeting, they can certainly have their voices heard. And the people who are talking, your time is up. The people that are anti-mask or anti-vax, you're coming to meetings, I receive emails, but I have to say, the majority of people do not write, do not attend, are obviously able to deal with whatever the guidance is that's in place, whatever the rules are that are in place, and they teach their children to cope with them. And that's all I have to say.
They do not see who they voted for, look at the new people on your board. That's just it all.
Can I just, um?
Wait till next year when more of us are in there. I'm voting for you, Luisa. Yes. Well, we're out of.
So you're okay with me?
Go right ahead.
So there were, I took notes on the comments that were made. Many of the people that came to the podium made comments about some different issues. But I'm going to try to answer some of the questions and ask Mrs. Reichman to respond to one of the, one of the questions, but, so Mr. Beyond though. So as far as, so you brought up a point about charter buses and you brought up a point about seat belts, so we'll get to some of the other issues as well. But to start with the buses, so the district, the Board of Ed, created a standard a few years ago that if the district was to contract with a charter school bus company, that ultimately they, they require seat belts in some fashion. So a commercial charter bus, it does not require seat belts at all. There was this terrible accident that took place, right, a few years ago, around Mount Olive, right, somewhere around there. And at that point, the board, horrified by what happened during that accident, decided that it was going to establish a contracting standard where seat belts were required. Sometimes they're three-point, sometimes they're two-point. The fact is there are seat belts even though none are required. So some of the companies put in, you know, they made decisions about what kind of belts they could put in. Probably the older buses have the two seat belts, the others have probably the three-point harness. So that's the origin of that. So that would cost perhaps more money if there was a newer bus. You know, those are all details I don't know about. With regard to the ordering of weightlifting equipment, I've been in the weight room, I know that we are, we have a very nice weight room at Wayne Hills and I know that they have all kinds of equipment there. I will have to look into the issue of weight plates and.
We just received, literally, this week, and it'll be two years away.
Okay, so it's entirely possible, it could be a supply chain issue that I don't know about, but I will look into it, okay? So as far as, I can't talk about staff members, it would be inappropriate for me to weigh in about that. With regard to the directory, there was a. With regard to the directory, there was, it is correct that there was a directory that was recreated based on input from members of the booster club community. So in other words, they said, well, one of the things that should be in this, this document, it would be great if we could reach out and contact and communicate more with other, of the booster clubs. So there was a request to actually create that directory. So yes, it was published with the intention and belief that it was okay because these people gave their numbers, and like I said, it was one of the points.
One more to notify.
Okay, well, that's another story, so, but it's not a, you know, it wasn't that there was, there was an intent there basically to meet what, if, if the booster clubs contributed ideas to this, this book, right, that we put together, that was one of them. So like I said, it was, it came from a booster club. With regard to the honor roll? You want to talk about that?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Because I just wanted to clarify, I know there were questions. So I just, as a point of clarification, what Ms. Kumar was referencing is we have policy, but it's a regulation that we were discussing where all the detail that specifies how this is played out and what it looks like in terms of administration. So the regulation's based on the district policy, but it's left to the administrative discretion in the design and the implementation. What we did tonight was we looked at the policy, and then we looked at the regulation, and we agreed that we would bring it back, and we wanted to have deeper and further discussion. And, and then we would consider bringing together a committee if we got to a point where we needed to have deeper involvement. But it is going back to the next education committee so that we could sit down and look at the regulation, have a discussion about it. So that was just a point of clarification.
How long?
We're not going back. I'm sorry, it's not a back and forth, I just wanted to make sure everybody can hear. So the next education committee meeting is not at the next meeting, it's the meeting after that.
And you also have with the question from Mr. Battercell?
Yes.
About curriculum, we got to talk about that, because you have that going on.
Yes, just so everyone can hear. I know there was a question about curriculum changes and updates. We have just, we're, we're just starting, we're working in budget planning process and planning for all of our curricular updates. As Dr. Toback had indicated, we have QSAT coming in, that's our accountability, where we produce all of our curriculum documents. Due to the pandemic, all of our curriculum writing is scheduled to happen over the summer. Our timeline was put together in the beginning of the school year and interrupted, obviously, by the pandemic, and the priority shifted to keeping our schools open every day, having all hands on deck, utilizing any staff we have to make sure we not shut down any classes. We are scheduling and planning, you'll see it on an upcoming board agenda once we approve the budget process. Then we'll have to advertise for teachers to actually complete the curriculum writing. Just this week on the, I'm sorry, I'm looking for my notes with the date, last week, I'm sorry. We had our, on February 3rd, the internal diversity, equity, and inclusion committee met to look at all of the new resources. I know we had discussed at previous meetings that we were anticipating resources from the state. Those have all been shared, they're all online, anyone can access them. And then our respective building committees will now reconvene at the building level with their parents to look at those resources. So parents will be involved in the process. And anything related, I know there were questions about social, emotional learning. Right now, we are just doing intake in terms of any programs that are out there that may provide a resource bank that would seem suitable to the district. But again, there's a process, and if we were to budget for it and decide to make a decision to move ahead with the program, we would go through a committee, and parents would be involved in the committee.
So the next, there was a few questions from Mrs. Masak. One of them was about filters and how filters are used to filter out what might be deemed as pornographic material. So all the software that we have, the filters we have, are compliant with the Child Internet Protection Act. So it's something you can Google, that is a standard that is out there that has been established.
Repeat the name?
Okay, the Child Internet Protection Act. If you want to Google that, that gives you some idea. With regard to how the district is spending federal funds, that is something that we can.
We have some information on our website.
We do, right?
And our audits will.
Okay. So in other words, there is information, Mr. Ma, for pointing out, there's information available on the website. In many cases, it has yet to be spent, but it's been allocated for different purposes. And with regard to. What's that? I think, let's see, that's honor roll. I am, I am not aware of any afternoon trade school. Is it, the, say, County Technical School, as far as I know, does not, does not have a half-day program. It's full-time. We don't, that's Bergen County, so we wouldn't have any connection with the Bergen County Technical School. If it's private school, that's not, that's nothing, we would not fund any, any student to go to a private trade school.
Yeah, so my question is if they go to the trade school, does Wayne Hills get less money or Wayne Valley get less money if their students are staying there all day?
You're asking about a hypothetical situation that doesn't exist. There is no share-time program. Okay.
All right. I'll be quick, I promise. First and foremost, I'd like to address that winter sports, the capacity limits weren't lifted. And thank you for addressing that situation. I do think that that was important for our winter athletes, especially our seniors who will not be playing at the college level. So I do think that that's important for them to have those memories to finish out their high school career. I'm happy that we have the policy committee looking into the honor roll. We will visit the five minutes. Everybody, March 7th will be here before we know it. I know we're all anticipating seeing our kids' smiles, whoever wants to unmask their children. I as well am looking forward to March 7th for multiple reasons. And lastly, thank you all for emailing. I apologize if I didn't get back to anybody. I did the best that I could to keep correspondence going. I do appreciate everybody's effort on staying on top of everything. And just, just keep, keep reaching out to us, and we'll keep doing our job. That's what we're here for, so thank you, everybody. Motion closed.